All right, welcome to the Lawrence Douglas County Planning Commission meeting. Today is Wednesday, May 29th, and I'm going to request Drew go over the rules of the meeting.
Yes, good evening. My name is Drew Bilby, Planner, and I will be helping to facilitate the Zoom video portion of the meeting. We will work alongside the Chair to facilitate the meeting proceedings. I have a few housekeeping items for this hybrid meeting. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast on the city's YouTube channel and Cable Channel 25. Please remember to mute yourself during the meeting when you are not speaking. The chat function for this public meeting is disabled. All chats will go directly to me. Unless you are participating during the meeting, please turn your video off. This allows the active meeting participants to be seen on screen. You will still be able to hear the meeting. When you are participating, please turn your video on. If you have any trouble, you can send a chat to me. The city reserves the right to mute people or turn individual videos off to minimize distractions during the meeting. And now I'll turn the meeting back over to the Chair.
Thank you, Drew. So, the first thing tonight is to consider the minutes from the last meeting. Does anybody have any questions, or are we comfortable with the meetings from the last meeting?
I would move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Moving on to the committee reports. Do we have any updates from the Lawrence Douglas County Metropolitan Planning Organization Policy Board, either?
No, there was no meeting this month.
Okay, thank you. And Jeff, do we have any updates for the land development code?
There was a meeting, May 16th, thank you, that kind of went over some questions that they had and some questions that the Planning Commission also had. And so you'll see a little bit of that kind of coming back to you. And the steering committee will also have some further meetings. But it was also to really get a first look at through the entire code as one package and get through with all of the modules put together and make sure that's going on. So that more meetings to come, and you'll also have a little bit later this evening on your agenda.
Thank you. Okay, and Jeff, going on down the list, any additional written communication besides what's in our packet?
All communications received by the deadline were included as part of your packet this evening.
Thank you. Any communications from staff, planning commissioners, or other commissioners?
None this evening. Those all included as part of your packet.
Well, if I may.
Go ahead.
I wrote a letter to all the planning commissioners and to the staff members, and I quite mistakenly invited people to comment. And because Ms. Pepper was ready with the email, she reminded everyone that that was not a good idea. So I apologize to all of you for the invitation, and I appreciate Ms. Becker making sure that we stayed within the side of the law.
Thank you, Commissioner Eldridge.
That's my address. I'm sorry.
Any, sorry, was there a question?
I must have missed, I didn't get it, so. Must have missed my email address. But that's okay?
It's in the packet.
Okay.
Any action of waiver requests, determinations made by the city engineer?
None this evening.
None this evening. Okay. Any disclosure of ex parte communication? Go ahead.
Yes, for item number one, I was called to visit the property in question several months ago to look at landscaping issues, but we did not discuss, I did not know that this application was pending or in process, and we did not discuss this application.
Thank you.
But you know I'd been to the property at the invitation.
Thank you, Commissioner Ashworth.
I have a question about the ex parte. With number three, since it's the land development code, it's just a listening session, so are we to disclose ex parte conversations we've had about the land development code, or will that come when it comes before us for a vote?
Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, this is just to receive comment and presentation this evening. We would do ex parte, and that process is part of the voting procedure.
Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, a good note to keep those in mind and keep recording those for that process as it comes forward.
Any abstentions from the commissioners from specific agenda items? Okay. All right, now, we're going to open to general public comment. Anything that the public wants to comment on that's not on tonight's agenda. Is there anybody here that wants to talk about something not on our agenda? Drew, anybody online?
Seeing none.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I have some concerns about some-
Can you please come to the podium?
Sorry. Yes, my name is Sue Swartz.
Thank you.
And I have some questions about some street issues. Is that something that needs to be taken up at this meeting, or is it?
It's general public comment, so it's completely open. You have three minutes to tell us your-
I live on, well, I live on River Ridge between North Michigan and Iowa. And Peterson Road intersects going west off of Iowa, you know, and it's in conjunction with the industrial area. And that intersection is very, very congested many times during the day. I didn't know if that was something that you could look at as far as putting a three-way stop sign there, or, I don't know. It'd be nice if someone could take a look at that intersection as far as any type of-
I'm going to ask the person here that would know an answer to that. Jeff, what is your recommendation on that?
If you would just give us the information, we can get that with Municipal Services and Operations, who takes care of the intersections and traffic controls, and they'll be able to help you. So we can get you in touch with them and help out.
And with them also. And then also, on River Ridge Road, I know that you're talking about, under the agenda items, under number one, as far as the rezoning for the development of the 2.59 acres, I was concerned about how much traffic that was going to be bringing into that area. We do have, that's kind of the only crossway. Is that something I need to take up with?
That item is on tonight's agenda.
Right, that item will come up on the agenda. You can comment on traffic at that one.
At that time?
Yep.
Okay. Well, just basically, the Peterson intersection was the other thing that I want to talk about. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I have a question about communications, if I can.
Go ahead, please.
I was just curious, what, under D1 for communications, it says, receive written communications from the public. And I noticed there were three letters, and all three were regarding the Boston Commons. And I was just curious as to the date of them and why they were coming in front of us, and kind of where, in light of the stage of where that project is. I thought maybe I missed it, and I wasn't sure if that was coming back to us, or how that communication showed up on today's communications.
Those communications were received after your last meeting, and it was sent to you, so we just include it as part of this meeting agenda, so you would have it available.
Okay, but, so we had them when we, with the last packet, and they were in the last packet, is that what you said?
No, they would have come in after the last packet.
Okay.
So, yeah, they came in after the April meeting, so that's why we are including it in your May agenda. So you would have receipt of those letters.
Okay. Sounds great.
So any, any public comment received is included in our packet, is that?
Correct. So if there's something that's not necessarily on the agenda or related to an item, but it's something that people would like for you to see or to share with you, that does include as part of D1 on your agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we're now going to go through our regular agenda for tonight. I'm going to try to get, get us done at a reasonable time, so try to keep the meeting moving. Catherine, please go ahead.
Could it remind me, do I need to share the screen?
Yes.
Oh, there we go. Thank you. Okay, good evening, Commissioners Catherine Week, one of the planners. I just have a brief presentation just to kind of get us back to where we were when this item was deferred at the end of the March meeting. So this is the consideration for a rezoning at 340 North Michigan Street. And as I mentioned, you all deferred that to May, this meeting, for some further discussion about conditional zoning, and for staff to kind of review that criteria and compile a list of uses, how that would impact the uses that would be permitted on the property, and then also adaptive reuse of historically listed property. And I've included a memo in the packet, but just to briefly remind you, for any rezoning item, we kind of go through these. The key points for this particular property, to refresh everyone's memory, is that it is located in Tier One of the urban growth area. It's not in an approved area or sector plan. The RS10 district is a single dwelling district and does not allow the non-owner occupied short-term rental use, which is what is triggering this application that's before you. The property is not located in a regulatory floodplain or contain environmentally sensitive lands as defined in our land development code. The property is listed, is historically listed property, and it's listed as the Judge T. Stevens House, and it's listed in multiple registries, state, local, and the federal listing. The Historic Resource Commission had provided comment on the rezoning. That's also in the packet from the previous meeting. There are no proposed changes to the structure, to the site, or any proposed development associated with this application. This is just a rezoning request that's before you. The specific use triggering that request is not permitted in that current district, and this is coming about from the owner trying to generate some income to qualify for those historic tax credits and to maintain the property's historic structure. And this is just a reminder slide to kind of show you what the zoning is in the area. The property is highlighted in that light blue shaded area, and this kind of shows the context of the zoning. There's a little bit of scattering in the zoning. It is surrounded by some RS10 and county property, and then there are multifamily zoning, or RM zoning districts, that kind of hopscotch up that corridor of Michigan Street. So this is just to remind you of the context that we're talking about. Some key points from the memo that I provided, just to refresh, we saw this item at the March 27th Planning Commission meeting. You all voted to defer for us to provide you with additional information for consideration, particularly on the conditional zoning, and to make sure that that comparable use table incorporated all of the types of uses, whether it's accessory or permitted by special use permit. So we have a more complete listing of tables, not just the ones by right. Staff provided the memo in the packet outlining the review criteria for conditional zoning. And then also, in that use table, the, in the memo, identifies the different districts and how conditional zoning would impact those permitted uses. It was discussed by the Planning Commission that ideally, the RS10 uses that are, or the uses permitted in that RS10 would remain, and then only add the short-term rental use. When the use table flushes out, there are some uses that are lost, because we cannot permit uses that would not be permitted in the RM12 district. Even though you are rezoning to RM12 with conditions, you can't permit a use that would not be permitted in that district anyway. You can restrict uses, but you can't grant additional uses. So that table outlines those changes, shows you what uses are different, and then what uses would be lost. I think there was four. They're listed at the very bottom of the table. And then this property is not currently eligible for that adaptive reuse of historically listed property. That's a use classification in and of itself. That would require text amendment, and staff in the memo has identified that we are currently going through that land development code. That would be a prime opportunity to do that type of text amendment, to tweak the language, to specifically allow residentially, residential use properties to qualify for that adaptive reuse use. It doesn't currently. So staff is not recommending that a text amendment would be your likely outcome, although you could consider that, issuing that if you wanted. In the memo, staff is identifying that our position or our recommendation has not changed. Staff went through the eight criteria for decision-making on a rezoning to the RM12, and found that it did meet all of those eight criteria. But staff is wanting to point out that if, upon your discussion, you decide that conditional zoning is the path that this warrants, staff would make a recommendation that utilize the table that's been provided in the staff report, or discuss amongst yourselves if there are changes you want. So just for clarifying information, there are some criteria to consider when you're utilizing a conditional zoning. The code specifically outlines that conditional zoning may be considered when a clear and specific policy or recommendation of an approved area neighborhood plan, or the comprehensive plan is identified, or when a clear aggravation of a negative externality, so something that is impacting the surrounding area due to the rezoning, that is a good candidate for conditional zoning criteria. And when you are utilizing conditional zoning, there are condition criteria as well. And so I just want to put those out there for your discussion and consideration. So conditions imposed on a rezoning are intended to mitigate adverse impacts that can be reasonably expected to occur, without imposing such conditions on otherwise appropriate land use or development project. And the conditions must be reasonable and further the public health, safety, and welfare of the community, consistent with the community's comprehensive plan, or furthers an articulated community or neighborhood goal policy as expressed in the adopted area plan. And this is again where, in your discussion, you identify the goal or policy that warrants that conditional use. You want to make sure that your condition is adhering to that, mitigating those negative impacts. When the procedures of this article allow review bodies to recommend, or decision bodies to approve, an application with conditions, the conditions shall relate, and that's a "shall" statement, so in your discussion, you should remember that. It's a "shall" relate to the situation created or aggravated by the proposed use development. And again, to remind you, there is not a proposed development with this property. This is the proposal that's before you. It's the rezoning item. So it's a little bit of a unique situation, but that's what's before you. I also put the use table comparison chart in the slide, just so if we need to discuss that, or have it up for visual purposes, we can do that. And this is taken directly from the memo, and it shows those items in bold that are different from what is currently permitted in the RS10, and what would be permitted in the RM12, if you're moving those uses over. So for instance, I'm just going to use this as an example, attached dwelling that you see at the top of the list there, that is permitted by special use in the RS10 district, so that special use carries over in your conditional zoning if you go along the path that you discussed at the previous meeting. However, that's different than what is currently permitted in RM12. So it would be permitted by right, not by special use. So that's where the, kind of, the decoding of the, of the table here. So if it's, if it's bold and underlined, that's a change from what is normally permitted in RM12. And then the asterisks indicate those uses that would not be permitted if you were to utilize the conditional zoning to RM12. And as you can see, it encompasses that short-term rental use, which is the ultimate goal of the applicant, so. So again, staff's forwarding a recommendation of approval to the city commission to rezone from RS10 to RM12, without the condition, that's staff's recommendation. But if the commission determines that, making a recommendation of approval to the city commission to rezone the property from RS10 to RM12 with conditions, staff would recommend utilizing that table as your guide in your discussions, so. And I would be happy to stand for any questions, if you have them, or any clarifying items.
Thank you, Catherine.
I'm going to stop sharing, and we can reshare if we need that, or I can leave the table up. Your call.
You have a question?
I do.
Okay.
We have to, we have to wait until the applicant presents.
Sorry.
Sorry. We'll come back to you, Catherine.
Okay.
We'll come back. Yes, you can leave it up there.
I'll leave it up.
Is the applicant here? Is the applicant present?
I haven't seen him in the room, but I don't know about online.
Okay. Online, Drew's?
Don't see, don't see anybody unmuting.
Thank you. So the public has three minutes each to comment. Is there anybody that wants to make public comment on this? Go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening again. I'm Sue Swartz. I was just concerned about the amount of traffic there was going to be on those roads during construction on Michigan. It's very, it seems to me that that traffic's pretty congested and busy along there, especially since we've having all the construction on Sixth Street. We've had a lot of trucks coming up that way. I'm sure it'll increase it some, but River Ridge Road takes a lot of traffic from industrial park, and also, it's a good crossover for everybody that's trying to get around over, you know, the interstate. I guess it's a turnpike here. But at the street, I'm having troubles with the street again. See, I think the city has cut that street to put water lines in, and so as those trucks go by, there's divots in that street. And I'm concerned that that's going to get worse with the construction along there. I don't really oppose any type of rezoning, but I'm concerned about upkeep on the street and the increase in the traffic during construction through that area. That's all my concerns.
I'll redirect this to Catherine, but our, my understanding is that no new development is proposed, so this is-
At this point?
At this point. This is just rezoning. And I, in fact, I don't think the applicant wants to, anyway, that's-
Anything at this time?
Yeah.
But possibly in the future.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Any public comment online, Drew?
Seeing none.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the Planning Commission for discussion. Start us off.
Catherine, did you consider a special use permit?
So, yes.
For this particular use of this property?
Yeah, there is not permitted by special use permit in RS10.
So a special use permit is not permitted in RS10?
For this use, no.
Thank you very much.
Catherine, could I ask you to please clarify the point about the adaptive reuse designated historic property, and what is and is not permitted? That wasn't, that wasn't clear.
Yeah, so it's in the memo, the text language, there's some criteria that has to meet to qualify for adaptive reuse of historically listed property, and it is not permitted to, you're not allowed to use that for residential structure. So a detached dwelling is not eligible for the adaptive reuse currently in the code.
Okay, thank you very much.
So required text-
Sorry to ask you to repeat yourself.
Pardon?
Sorry to ask you to repeat yourself.
That's okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
You said, you said currently, so is that something that's being considered as a change in potential draft, new draft?
Yeah, I think both myself and the Historic Resource Administrator has mentioned it, and I think we will continue to mention that this is some language that we might want to change in the land development code.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
And forgive me, because I wasn't here for the March meeting.
Sure.
So I was trying to catch up with this. It did seem that, at least from my reading of the packet, that some of the concerns surrounded what could happen with an RM12 rezoning designation, in terms of development of the property down the line, just when you're rezoning. And it seemed from the staff report that staff was comfortable with the review processes in place, that would be in place should a proposal come in the future for RM12. Whereas, the concerns in the letters from the Historic Commission did not feel secure that there were the review process. Was, can you, Catherine, speak to why there's that difference in security of the review process, and how an RM12, if it was proposed to put a multi-dwelling unit on that piece of property?
I don't know if I can speak directly to that, but I can kind of reiterate what Lynn had said at the last, on the March 27th meeting, in that their primary discussion was future, whereas currently, they did determine that the rezoning itself is not detrimental, but in and of itself, rezoning to a different zoning district has some inherent uses by right for that district. So future was a little unsettling. So future was a little unsettling, I guess, for the HRC. It was also noted, and we reiterated it at the March meeting, that there are processes, for instance, even if that structure were to be remodeled, because it's listed in all three designations, it's not an administrative review likely. It is either the demo itself, if they were going to demolish the structure, would have to go before the Historic Resources Commission. If, for some reason, someone didn't agree with the Historic Resources Commission, that goes to, if they appeal that decision, that would go to the city commission. So there are two public hearing bodies that would be involved in that potential scenario. Also, for any development, even if it's a building permit level, not a site plan, that also goes through the HRC. So there are some levels of review, particularly for a listed property, that are over and above what maybe is an administrative review for other developments, like an administrative site plan or something. Thank you.
Catherine, you mentioned in the report that the Historic Resources Administrator reviewed and approved the rezoning. Is that...
Well, they didn't approve. They made, they expressed concern. That was in the packet from the original meeting. And the concern was future. They had a lot of discussion about it.
For the future?
Yeah, future, that the rezoning itself wasn't necessarily detrimental, because there's no action associated with this particular rezoning. But it does open up the potential for, if for some reason catastrophically the structure were to go away, that does open up potential for other types of developments to occur on that property.
So, excuse me, just to further clarify my understanding on this point, so regardless of what the zoning is on this particular property, and regardless of what a landowner in the future might be able to do as a matter of right, any future development would still be subject to the restrictions associated with this being a historic property. Those aren't trumped in any way. Those do not go away. Any development would still have to fit within those restrictions. Is that accurate?
Currently, yes. I mean, the only scenario that I could see is if, for some reason, they were somehow removed from the listing or the registries then. But I believe that's a process in and of itself that they have to appeal to be removed.
And I guess from a history buffs perspective, that would be a concern regardless of the zoning on that property.
Yeah, I don't think...
In its current zoning, if that was to go away, that would be potentially an issue.
Yeah.
I have another question, just to clarify. On the conditional zoning, if, let's say that it goes through and conditional zoning is in place, if the requirements are not met, or in the future something happens, does it go back to RS-10 or it stays our conditional zoning?
Yeah. Once you rezone the property, it stays until they would go through another rezoning.
The conditional is only just the restriction that is in it.
The restrictions, it would be conditional zoning in perpetuity until somebody changed it.
Got it.
May I ask a clarifying question around that, Catherine? Later tonight, we're going to be hearing an update on the, on proposed changes to the land development code. Part of that, I understand, is sort of a mapping of current zoning classes to new zoning classes. I'm curious about how the different zoning classes, the single-family versus the multifamily, would map, and I know this is not a foregone conclusion, but what are the two scenarios of how they would map under the proposed changes to the land?
So for like conditional zoning? I think I might let Jeff Herbeck answer that, but I believe the conditional zoning would remain.
Yeah, the conditional zoning would remain, because it is something that is in separate ordinance. So if somebody wanted to remove or modify a condition, it would be a rezoning process. So they'd come before the planning commission, ultimately the governing body would make the decision to either adopt or let that lie as it is. So once conditional zoning is in, it's in until somebody makes an action to take it out. So, excuse me, so you had a conditional zoning that limited density or required an extra site plan notification radius to it, those would still be intact as the new code gets adopted. They will still be there. The base zoning may change underneath, so I believe RS-10 converts to R1 in the new code as currently drafted. So it would still go to R1 as its new district, it's just converting it across. But that condition, if it was there, or excuse me, it's RM-12 converts to R3. So the R's, I have managed to derail myself, and I apologize right there. So if it was to adopt on the ordinance, it would go from RM-12 to R3, and the condition would still be there. So what would happen is the base zoning would convert to R3, but the condition would still be retained in the ordinance as it is. So if there was a condition that said has to give extra notice, that would be continued and maintained.
Thank you.
My apologies for derailing midstream there.
Any other comments or questions?
I do.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry if not everyone got my letter, but I think that our historic properties are very important, and I think they need to be preserved, and I think we need, as a planning commission, to help preserve those properties. Because what we're talking about here is the base district, and there is no desire to do anything on the part of the owner other than to be able to have some short-term rentals, which seems appropriate for this property because it's on two and a half acres. It's not going to be next to somebody else that could be really annoyed by these short-term rentals. And that's the important part of the local, state, and national designation on this property, is the fact that it is on a farm-like, or initially was a farm and still retains that farm property. And as the letter from the Historic Resources Commission commented, there certainly have been times when the city commission has allowed developments, even if they were in conflict with the standards of the national registry. And I think that that's understandable, because once the planning commission says the density should be multifamily, then I think any next owner, if there is a next owner for this property, reasonably can come to the city commission and say, wait a minute, here's my zoning, here's my density, let's look at Article 6. I can have 12 units per acre. I need to be able to build 12 units per acre. And we're being told that nobody's asking for that. So that's why I would like to make a motion in support of conditional zoning, because I think it's important that we keep the density at the individual level, that we maintain the full acreage that is there as part of the registered property. I think Catherine has done a wonderful job looking at every alternative that she could find for this guy to have his short-term rentals. And I think it's terrific that there's an owner who wants to generate some revenue, wants to keep this property going. And as far as I'm concerned, I would like to make a motion that we support his desire and that we do so by rezoning to RM-12 as a conditional rezoning. The only information that we got at this meeting that was in addition, I mean, public comment, was the Lawrence Preservation Alliance has now asked us, please, not to change the zoning. And I think that's another important thing to pay attention to. So what I'm asking that we do is that we consider the following conditions for RM-12 zoning, that the only permitted uses are those that are present in the RS-10 zone plus the short-term rental use permitted in the RM-12 zone pursuant to the Land Development Code Section 20-553. These proposed permitted uses are all included in the May 29, 2024 staff report. Second condition would be the density and dimension standards of the conditionally rezoned property are restricted to those permitted for RS-10 in Article 6 of the Land Development Code. And third, that the property owner is required to provide 30 days' written notice to the Historic Resources of any proposal to change the use, the zone, the density, or dimensional standards prior to placing such a proposed change on the city commission agenda for a public hearing. I believe that these conditions are supported by the following factors pursuant to the Golden Rule. Because the conditional rezoning would not change the density of the subject property, it would allow the property to retain its low density while generating the desired revenue. So number one, conformance of the comprehensive plan. Chapter one of a comprehensive plan calls for part of our vision to be, quote, "preservation and celebration of our rich housing," close quote. This property certainly includes rich housing that was built in the 19th century by a prominent local judge who was also a founder of the KU School of Law. Chapter four of our comprehensive plan at Goal 3.2 calls for us to, quote, "maintain historic structures and elements to help conserve unique aspects of the neighborhood," unquote. This neighborhood, you could see in the zoning that Catherine showed us, still involves large acreages. All around it, it's RS-10. If this is zoned to an RM-12 without any conditions, it becomes a spot zone in this large acre property. Goal number, or chapter seven, which is this chapter that deals with historic preservation, Goal 1 is to, quote, "identify, evaluate, designate, and preserve our community's historic resources." And I think we should help the owner do this, undertake the preservation of this property by maintaining the proper density and allowing him to generate income. Goal 2 is, quote, "conserve and protect the visual context of the historic resources," close quote. And that is done by preserving what is the nationally-registered site, which is the acreage and the building, not just the building. Goal 4.6 says to implement incentives for conserving historically significant farming lands and structures. And I think Catherine has done a great job helping us identify what this property is and if we choose to do conditional zoning, how we can do it. Goal 4.8 is, quote, "retain and maintain historic single-family residences in residential historic and conservation districts." I think that's what we have right now, and that we should help preserve it. Goal 4.9 is incentivize the appropriate reuse and revitalization of historic structures. And I hope that's what we can do by allowing the property owner to generate some revenue. Number 2, zoning and uses of nearby property. All of the surrounding property is zoned RS-10 or AG-2, which is transitional agriculture. On the other side of I-70, there is the RMD and some multifamily, but I-70 becomes a very hard barrier between properties. And on the west, there is RS-10 property, but that's what KDOT is using as a storage area. I don't quite understand why they're doing it, but I guess they're KDOT, so they do what they want to do. Number 3, the character of the neighborhood. This property is part of the remainder of the large, low-density lots that are surrounding the neighborhood in the 19th century. Number 4, plans for the area neighborhood. There aren't any. Number 5, suitability of the subject property for the uses to which it's been restricted under the existing zoning regulations. I think it's been suitably restricted, and I think, excuse me, rezoning to a conditional use will simply allow that property to thrive. Number 6, length of time the subject property has remained vacant as zoned? None. It's not vacant. Number 7, extent to which approving the conditional rezoning will detrimentally affect nearby properties. Nobody has objected to keeping the property in the same kind of condition with the full property as part of the nationally-registered property. Neighbors and Historic Resources Commission and the Lawrence Preservation Alliance have been concerned about increasing the density from low density to medium density, which is what the RM-12 without any conditions would do. The gain, if any, to the public health, safety, and welfare due to the denial of the application as compared to the hardship imposed upon the landowner, if any, as a result of denial of the application. The public gains a preserved and celebrated local and national historic property with conditional rezoning, and the property owner gains the ability to use a short-term rental to support the maintenance of the historic property. It does not seem to me that there's any loser in this situation. Professional staff had recommended the RM-12 without conditions, but I appreciate Catherine's very gracious comment that if we choose to use conditions, that we use the tables that she's provided in the staff report, and I think we should do that. So I make the move that we...
Can you put, tell us your language for the motion?
May I, before you do that? I think there was some wording about a condition that would add to the RS-10 as opposed to subtract from the RM-14. And so I think, I think I saw Randy start to speak up, and I'm not sure if that's what he was going to talk about, but I think the wording should be subtractive and not additive. Subtract from the...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Commissioner Carter, you have that correct. This is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. If you're going to conditionally zone it to RM-12, you can't bring anything from RS-10 into RM-12 that is not there, but you can take things out of RM-12 to make it resemble RS-10. The same thing with the density restrictions. You can't bring anything from, that would be RS-10 into RM-12, but you can limit size, density, and things like that in the RM-12. And then regarding the historic resources, we can't really put any more, we can't do anything outside of Chapter 22 that's not required. We don't have the authority. Even the city commission wouldn't have the authority to require them to make certain notices to the HRC that isn't already required by Chapter 22. So...
Thank you, Randy. Go ahead. No, no, I was just going to say, before you make your motion, I'm just going to poll the commission to see if, just to give you, just to see, are you guys comfortable with what Commissioner Eldridge is proposing before she makes the motion, just to get a sense of where we're all on this?
I'm interested in the conditional zoning. I think I have some questions about what uses would be permitted. Just this whole conversation gives a little bit of more clarity that I would like of like what it is. So we're basically saying it would be RM-12, but we're cutting out everything except, I would like the list of like what we're cutting out, right? And then I also am just kind of curious, obviously, the new land development code, we're going to discuss this evening or whatever, but what's in that RM-12 that we wouldn't be, or what will be R3, right? So all of a sudden, we've conditioned it. How does that work?
I don't think we should think about the land development code, because it's not, it's, you know, you know, I mean, but it's not here yet, so...
So I guess what, for me personally, like, I'm kind of with the idea that the, no one really wants to change this zoning to have it high density. I mean, not no one, but the applicant isn't seeking that, right? So like for us to do that, I get concerned about doing that when the whole goal is just to do the short-term rental. So all we're trying to get at is how to help them get the short-term rental aspect of it. But we might end up doing more than that in light of like all of the balls that are in the air at the moment. So I'm just trying to process that. So I'm in favor of what we're thinking about doing, but I still am processing it, I guess is what I would say.
And likewise, I have what might be kind of a cousin process question around this text amendment around adaptive reuse, because, and may I, I'd like to ask one more question about that. If the adaptive reuse designated historic property use did allow or did include residential properties, would any of this be necessary, or would we be able to take care of this under that use?
I would have to look at that a little...
Um, I would have to look at that a little more. Jeff or Becky may know off the top of their head, but as long as the short-term rental use was deemed part of the adaptive reuse of a historically listed property, then in theory, yes, that would have worked, but it is not eligible for that currently, so that was not the option.
Jeff, do you have any other?
Hard to say what the new code will look like and how the forum will take on it, but one of the intents of that is to kind of help reconnect the historic resources code to the land development code because it's been pretty well partitioned off for quite a while, so they don't really talk to each other very, well, they don't really talk to each other at all.
I think part of the problem is that was envisioned before short-term rentals was really a thing, and so the commercial uses were thought, when the code was written for this particular, it was, that was really not something that people were doing to their detached dwellings. So that, I think there's a disconnect there.
Thank you. The reason I ask is because I'm returning to our mid-month where we were talking about the possible retirement of conditional zoning altogether. And so that, you know, six months to a year from now, this conversation may not be possible. And so the, the remedy was rather than conditional zoning, propose a text amendment. And so one thing that I would like to propose as part of this, not, it could be a separate motion or it could even just be other business, is that we initiate a text amendment that would account for this type of use in R1 in the future. And because, it's kind of fitting, I'm, because no matter what discussion is, I won't be around to participate in it. And I think back to my early months on the commission, back in 2018, every single month we were looking at special use permits for short-term rentals. And so what we don't want, I think, is to return to a situation where every rental property is a candidate for short-term rentals. There needs to be some sort of mechanism that preserves the process but still allows for these kinds of extraordinary applications. And so I just wanted to, you know, you can leave it up to the future commission to worry about that, but I think to save the, to save future applicants from this kind of grief, but also to save future commissions from going the opposite direction, it would be really helpful to try to accommodate this within the future.
I don't disagree. However, I, I think that my concern about wanting to get the conditional rezoning done was, I think this guy applied, I don't know when he applied, we first heard about it in March, so he must have applied in January or February to start generating income. I don't want to see him wait any longer because I think it's a really good plan for that property. In an ideal world, we'd wait the 12 months or whatever it might take to get this put in the new code, but I don't think that's fair.
Yeah, I'm trying to do both at once. So I, I generally support what you're, what you're proposing. I'm just thinking that conditional, conditional zoning very well won't even be an option in the future. And so if we look at, you know, this type of application, can we anticipate it and make the next similar application not have to go through this process?
I would hope that the new land development code will already anticipate that for us, that we don't have to do the text amendment, that all we have to do is wait for the land development code to... I, I, I don't know. Is that right, Jeff?
Commissioners, if I may, I think Randy wanted to jump in.
Yeah, this is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. Short-term rentals are governed by a separate provision of the code where there's licensing involved, and it is specifically prohibited in any RS district. That was what the city commission decided at some point. So there's nothing that we, the planning commission, there's nothing the city commission can do at this point in time to do a text amendment that would allow a special use permit or something else because it's specifically prohibited in RS. When we first started the program, it was going to be allowed in RS with special use permits, which is why we had all those at the same time. The governing body found that to be a little bit overly burdensome, so they just said none in RS. So that's why we are in the situation we have. Now, if the governing body were to change that and allow it some other way in the future, then, then we, we would have a little more freedom and a little more flexibility, but since this property is zoned RS, it cannot have short-term rental, it cannot be licensed for short-term unless it's rezoned RM. So I just...
Okay. Well, thanks. Sorry to belabor this, but to look a year into the future then, if we have a similar type of application, will there be no choice, might there be no choice but to do a full rezoning without conditions?
Or to say no.
You would just have to say no rezoning? Yeah, okay. That was basically what I wanted to explore, so thank you for indulging me.
So, yeah, going back to, do you guys have an opinion on whether we want to, staff is recommending no conditions, Commissioner Eldridge is proposing that we add conditions. What does the commission think? Go ahead.
Just a clarifying question because I'm looking over here at Commissioner Brode's screen because he, there's the second table here for RS-10 and RM-12, and then I'm looking at the first table. So the conditional zoning that's being discussed, is that what you're talking about Catherine's list here in that first? So that list does not include multi-dwelling structure duplex, those sorts of things? So what we're, what you're proposing is, is the list that, under RM-12, as proposed in this first table?
In the memo. I think she's talking about, sorry, in the memo, not the staff report, which was from March, but in the memo.
In the memo, yes.
Page, page 14 has a different list.
Okay.
It's hard to tell which, which page is the one, but I believe the list Catherine is the one that is in your memo dated May 29.
Correct.
And at least on my version of that, it's either on page four of 30 or page 16 of 55.
16 of 55.
But that's the conditional zoning that you are proposing?
Yes. And these are the ones that Catherine's identified as proposed, permitted uses with conditional zoning.
From pages four and five or pages 16, 17, since the table spans two pages. Okay.
Thank you.
So then the bold, like, so, like, the bold underlined letters?
I can give a shorthand version if it would help for discerning what is happening in the table.
Yeah.
If it's bold, it's a change, and I can go down the list. So what, there were four properties or four uses that would be lost because they would not be permitted in the RM-12. And that is accessory dwelling unit is not permitted, so we would not be able to add that. An event center small, event center large would also not be permitted. They were permitted in RS-10 with a special use permit, but they would not be permitted in the RM-12. Private dining establishments, those were also permitted with a special use permit in RS-10, but they would not be permitted in RM-12. And I'm sorry, there's five. An urban farm is also permitted with special use permit in RS-10 but would not be permitted in the RM-12. And then the other differences, so attached dwelling would normally be permitted in the RM-12 district, but because you're carrying over how it's permitted in RS-10, it would now only be permitted with a special use permit. So that's the change there. Same with assisted living. It would normally be permitted in RM-12 but would only be permitted with a special use permit in this case. Also, adult daycare home, normally permitted but would only be permitted under the condition with a special use permit. And that aligns with what can carry over from the RS-10 district. Does that help?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I can, I now know what your asterisks and your, like, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm just going to, I'm going to poll the commission. So let's start with Commissioner Brode. Are you for conditional zoning or are you for?
Yes, yes, I'm, yeah.
Commissioner Ashworth?
Looking at this list, sure.
Yeah, I can share a few comments here. So I guess I'm generally supportive of the intent of the proposed conditional zoning. I appreciate that we're seeking to protect the property. I appreciate that this has been offered as a creative means of doing that. I think, though, I'm, I'm not necessarily in agreement that the proposed means are necessary. I go back to, I guess, a lot of the original discussion that we had in March was related to the restrictions that are imposed on this property as a result of its historic designation and the fact that, as, as you mentioned, Commissioner Eldridge, in its application and in that designation, it was found significant that this property was a, started as a farm, that the open spaces around it are significant, that any development of any kind, whether it's, you know, an accessory dwelling or a multifamily dwelling, anything that would come in would have to be fit within those particular restrictions. And so I'm perhaps naively, but I sit here comfortable that we have ample protections and procedures in place already to ensure that if this was zoned up, that we wouldn't necessarily be signing up for an intensification of use or additional density. As noted in previous discussion, this change doesn't do anything. This, this zoning change doesn't change the density on this property. There is no development currently planned with respect to this property. It just changes what is potentially available in the future. I agree with the staff's original conclusions with respect to the factors that we consider in, in determining a zoning change, and for that reason, I'd be reluctant to go down the path of conditional zoning. Understand that's a tool available to us, but from my mind, that's one that we shouldn't use lightly. We should pull it out if, if there aren't any other means available to us. And I guess as I look at the restrictions that are already on this property, I feel like conditional zoning, while I support the intent of it, isn't necessary in this case. So that's where I'm at.
Do you want to say anything, Commissioner?
Well, only that if we don't have conditional zoning, we can't change the density. We would have RM-12 density, not this kind of density that exists on the property now. And so the conditional zoning helps us maintain the existing, and I think that is an important change.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree that this is a means of putting further protections on this property, and the intent of those protections, I'm fully in support of. I just, I, I don't think it's necessary. I think, like I said, conditional zoning is a tool that we should use strategically and sparingly. Would prefer not to have a landscape within the city that is, you know, a thousand different patchwork designs of zoning. It's, you know, RM-12 plus this one particular use, or it's RS-10 and plus this one particular use. There needs to be more certainty and understanding as to what these categories mean and, and that's, that's where I'm at, so I'll pass it on down.
Yeah, I'll, I'll add my, my two cents. So visiting the area, it, I, I do agree that abutting this property, it's RS-10, it's agricultural land, but very close, maybe less than a mile away, you have duplexes, there's a mobile park a few miles away. So it's, I think Catherine said this the last time, that the, you know, one aspect of, the historic nature is one aspect of the nature of the neighborhood. And there's many other factors that this zoning, change in zoning would support, in my opinion. So I, I, I tend to agree with Catherine's opinion that we don't need to add any conditions, and I think that the requirements in place as far as the historic registry are sufficient, in my opinion. So that's, that's what I think.
I think this, I can't recall in six years when we've approved a conditional zoning change, which means we're far from having hundreds of different, you know, unique zoning And also, it's very likely we won't be even supporting conditional zoning in the near future. I, I support the conditions. I support the intent. I opposed just the straight rezoning in the last time we discussed this because while I, I'm, I'm comforted by staff's confidence in process, I have no confidence in whatever generation will follow. I have no confidence that people 10 years from now will, will react to the, to the situation the same way we are today. And so I think, you know, greater protection is needed. Looking at the neighborhood, it's hard to consider what is the character of the neighborhood. It is so unusual. It is so eclectic with multifamily housing, farmland, industrial, just all practically adjacent. And so I think this is a really exceptional property and one probably worthy of exceptional treatment. So I'm, I would support the conditional zoning here.
I don't think I need to elaborate. I would agree with Commissioner Eldridge, and I think that Commissioner Carter kind of expressed how, how I'm, I'm feeling about it. And when I look at the property, I went to visit it, and I do think it's difficult sometimes the character of the neighborhood. I find it difficult when there are either man-made or natural huge infrastructures separating chunks of land. Like, it's hard for me to look over I-70 and to say that the character of the neighborhood there is similar to the character of the neighborhood right here because it just, it just is, to me, I-70 is, splits that neighborhood to where I'm not sure I would classify it as the same neighborhood. And so I kind of struggle with that anyway, and I think I support the conditional use because otherwise I'm kind of, would be leaning more towards opposing the rezoning.
I want to say this to Commissioner Carter. It's like I was on the fence until like your last minute, and, and it just like turned on the proverbial light bulb above my head that we obviously have no idea about the future, whether it's 10 years, 20 years. And we've all seen what the real estate market has done literally just in the last year or two. And who's to say that five years, 10 years, 20 years from now that, that even though it's only 2.7 acres, it's not worth $10 million, and somebody's going to say, okay, I'll take that. It's already zoned and now I can go do whatever, or the new guy can do whatever they want to. So you have taken me off the fence and I'm, I'm good for the conditional zoning. And this could be your legacy.
I don't know that the local, state, and national preservation statutes really can in the future protect that property. We say, yes, it is a full property. It was a farm, and that's what was on the national registry, is talking about the entire property. I, I don't know that that would protect it if we just change it to 12 rather than 10. So I, when, I know the proposal was, this is the only way that owner thought he could do the short-term rental, which was true in RM-10, you couldn't, RS-10, you couldn't do it. I would support the conditions because I think that further protects this property. And downstream, it could be changed a dozen times on what future commissions want to do with it, but I, I think for this day, I would certainly support those conditions.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, did you record what the conditions were that Commissioner Eldridge read out, or do we want her to state them again so we can determine if they're okay to legally and all that kind of?
We, we have them in, in the packet as part of that, but they would be, need to be restated to conform and comply with the law.
Okay. Can you read them again, Commissioner Eldridge?
I will try.
Okay.
I think Mr. Larkin made some very good comments about them, and I want to revise what I'm requesting so that they're consistent with Mr. Larkin's comments. I think, I think that...
Are you asking for him to, to hear? Randy, are you here, are you there, Randy?
Yes, I am here.
He's listening.
Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney.
Randy, if you have a copy of that letter I drafted, I would propose including just the first two conditions and not the third.
That those, those are fine as long as we are not incorporating anything from RS-10 into RM-12 that's not already there. That's the only thing that would be illegal, but otherwise, those first two things are fine. And with regarding the density... those first two things are fine. And with regarding the density and the size restrictions, you can limit what it is in RM12. You just can't wholesale move what's in RS10 into RM12. So you can say the density restrictions are such and such, or the size restrictions are such and such. And that will be the condition going forward.
So that the conditional zoning, rezoning would be only the permitted uses are those in the present RS10 zone, plus the short-term rental use permitted in the RM12 zone pursuant to the Land Development Code, Section 20, 553. Those proposed permitted uses are all included in the May 29, 2024 staff report.
Yes. And excluding anything that's currently in RS10 that's not in RM12.
You have to exclude it.
That would close the door.
And exclude any uses presently in RS10 that are not in the proposed permitted RM12 conditional use.
That would, that covers the basis.
Okay. Number two, the density and dimension standards for the conditionally rezoned property are restricted to those permitted for RS10 in Article 6 of the Land Development Code.
So with that one, we need to go to RM12 and then either reduce the density or reduce the size restrictions. You can reduce it to be consistent with what's in RS10. You just can't bring anything from RS10 over to RM12 again. So you can make RM12 look like RS10. You just can't wholesale move everything into it, if that makes sense.
So if I change that language to say, the density and dimension standards for the conditionally rezoned property are restricted to those that are consistent with the RS10 density and dimension standards of in Article 6 of the Land Development Code.
And exclude anything that's in RS10 that would not be applicable to RM12, then that will close that gate as well.
Okay.
I just have a question real quick. The table you referred to, you said the table in the staff report?
Yes.
Was it the, was it in the staff report or the staff memo?
Memo.
So I think we just want to make sure that we say the date-
She didn't get the right date.
Memo, the night.
The May 29 staff memo.
Okay. Jeff, are we okay now?
Let me read this back for the commission's edification on this one. And please stop me if I'm not getting this one tracked right there. It is subject to the condition that the uses that are present in RS10, plus the short-term rental use, and excluding any uses in the RS, excluding any uses that are not permitted in the RM12. Excuse my apologies. And exclude any uses in the RS10 that are not permitted in the RM12. And density and dimensional standards to be consistent with the RS10 districts, excluding those that are not applicable in the RM12.
Randy, you agree?
Yes, that would work.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. That's my motion. And I would include the findings of fact that I read out to you.
Wait, for, as part of the motion, as part of the motion, you mean, or?
Well, yeah, we have to have some findings of fact that will support this motion.
But you can read those out later. The motion's just the motion.
Motion's the-
The motion's just the motion.
Motion's just the motion.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay. And I, just, any discussion before we take the vote?
Second it first.
Oh, you second it?
Yeah, then you have to discuss it.
Yeah, sorry. Any discussion? I just have one question, Jeff. Quick. Can you just read the first line that you, of the, of the motion? I just want to, I thought I misheard it, but I just want to hear what you said.
It's subject to the conditions that the uses that are present in RS10, plus the short-term rental use, and exclude any uses in RS10 that are not permitted in the RM12.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
That would be a motion that we recommend those conditions.
And you can say the staff, including the, you can reference the staff report, right?
Right.
Because we're changing the recommendation.
Because I, well, I believe that we need slightly different findings of fact.
Right. Do we, do we, do we need separate findings of fact?
You can note the discussion and the materials submitted as part of the packet, as part of the finding.
So we can just, as part of the packet, right?
And also, you can discuss what was discussed at the hearing tonight, what Commissioner Eldridge read would be fine. You can make that part of the record in support of the motion.
Okay. And so you, you already have that in a written form anyway, so you don't need me to read it again.
Correct. We have it as part of the packet for the evening.
Okay. Thank you all. I'm sorry it's been quite such a ordeal to get it done, but I think it's the right thing.
We're here. So all in favor of Commissioner Eldridge's motion, please say aye.
Aye.
How many is that, Jeff? I'm sorry. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All against?
No.
One on each side.
Seven, two, I think that was. Thank you very much. That went quicker than I thought it would. Thank you. All right. Moving on to agenda item number two, and I think it's Avery. Is that right?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Avery Kerner, and I'm a planner with the City County Planning Office. The next item before you this evening is a special use request for the expansion of a nonconforming residential use. The applicant plans to rehabilitate and remodel the existing apartment building at 908 Indiana Street. The apartment building is a two-story structure with a basement, and it is registered with the planning office as a nonconforming five-unit multi-dwelling structure located in the Commercial Strip District. Current use standards require multi-dwelling structures in the CS District to be part of a mixed-use development, where at least 50% of the floor area is designated to non-residential uses. The apartment building was constructed prior to the adoption of the 2006 Land Development Code and does not conform to the current use standards, since it only contains residential units. But since the use has been registered with the planning office as a legal nonconforming use, it may continue in accordance with the provisions for nonconforming uses, which can be found in Article 15 of the Land Development Code. At this time, there are six units within the building, but prior to 2015, there were a total of eight units. Two of those units were located in the basement but abandoned around 2015 because they did not comply with building code. During the nonconforming use registration process, staff determined that the property's zoning and size would have only ever supported five units, which is the number of units that would be maintained on site with the proposed project. The proposed remodel would entail reconfiguring the floor plan to provide additional space within each of the units. And two of the units would be expanded into the basement, which is currently space that's being unused. The total floor area proposed for the reconfigured units exceeds 25% of the total floor area of the existing nonconforming units. And the code requires expansion of, expansions of this size to be reviewed in accordance with the special use procedures. As you are aware, the special use permits are a discretionary approval process that require recommendation by the Planning Commission to the City Commission, who would ultimately be the final decision-making body on the special use permit. The review and decision-making criteria, along with staff's review and analysis of the request, are outlined in the staff report for this item. Staff is of the opinion that the proposed expansion would be compatible with the existing land uses in the area. Subject property is located in an area of higher urban density and development, and is adjacent to mixed-use, commercial, and other multifamily residential uses. The existing apartment building was constructed in the early 1950s, and records show that it contained and has continued to maintain multiple dwelling units since at least the early 1960s. The proposed expansion would require raising the structure approximately 16 inches to add the headspace needed to meet building code, but the footprint of the building itself would not be increased with this project. The expansion of the nonconforming residential use into unused portions of the existing apartment building is not anticipated to significantly change the overall character and use of the property, or cause any significant impacts, adverse impacts on surrounding properties. The subject property is also located within the Oriad Neighborhood Design Overlay District, which means that any improvements to the exterior of the structure must comply with the Oriad Neighborhood Design Guidelines. The proposed project has already been reviewed for compliance with these guidelines through a separate design review application. And the Historic Resources Commission approved the proposed site changes and facade changes in August of last year. Staff's findings are outlined within the staff report. And based on those findings, staff recommends approval of the special use permit to expand the nonconforming residential use, subject to three conditions. The first condition is that the applicant submit an updated copy of the proposed floor plan showing the layout of the units. The applicant has already provided this for staff to review. Unfortunately, that was not included in tonight's packet, but I can pull that up if necessary at the end of this. The second recommendation or recommended condition of approval is to restrict the expansion to the interior of the existing building within its current footprint and within the new proposed building height. And then the last recommended condition is for expiration of the special use permit upon the loss of the nonconforming status of the registered nonconforming use. And with that, I'd be happy to help answer any questions.
Thank you, Catherine. Is the applicant present?
Yes. I believe we have Chris Cunningham on line via Zoom. And then we also have Tom Larkin, the property owner, with us.
And either of you, if you have 10 minutes to present, and then we'll open it up for public comment? Is it Chris that's going to present?
Good evening, Commissioners. Sorry, I froze up there for a second.
Yep.
I think it's frozen again. Are you, are you back, Chris?
Maybe I woke her.
Yeah, please go ahead.
Hello there. Tom Larkin here. Avery did a great job on presentation of our application. Been working with her for a long time on this. So maybe a better way is for me to be available for questions if there's anything specific. But as she mentioned, we have gone through HRC's process before with their approval. And so this is the next step in the process.
So, thank you. And we might call on you. Thank you.
Sure.
Is there any public here that would like to comment on this item? Anyone online, Drew?
I don't see any.
Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the Planning Commission for discussion.
I guess if I may, just like, Avery, could you just clarify something for me? The expression "expansion," without increasing the square footage or changing the envelope of the building, could you elaborate what, how we're to interpret that, please? Is it the raising of the, of the, of the structure, or?
So the expansion actually refers to the increase in the total floor area that's occupied by the use. And so right now, only five of those units within the existing structure, or that's what the, the current floor area is calculated at. And so the proposed floor area where there's a, with the reconfigured floor plan for the units, expanding into the basement, and then enlarging the footprint of each of those units within the building, is what triggers that expansion of the use.
Thank you. Appreciate the clarification.
So going into the basement?
Yes.
When I went by, I saw great piles of dirt. Is that because you've made the basement deeper? Is that how you're expanding?
That's actually from the neighboring property. So part of it will be potential fill when the building is raised on one of the spots to the east there. But most of that's going to be.
And the other question I had was, as I went in sort of the alley, I guess it's an alleyway that goes east and west, it looked like there were numbers on the side of the building. And are those parking spots?
Historically, yes, they have been. So there's been diagonal parking there for this far back.
So could you please?
Sure.
Approach the desk.
Maybe you can speak to this than me, but. So the, the, I guess to speak to the piles first, just so it's on the record, that was from across the alley, the 912 Indiana property. There's some fill there that was moved. Most of that will be removed. It just had happened right next door. It's pretty, not part of this, no. It's just, it's pretty tight quarters back in there. So, and as for the parking spaces, historically, as far back as the aerial imagery is shown, this building has never been conforming in any of the records back to the 50s. But there's been angled parking in that part of the alley for tenants that have occupied this building. And so it's, I don't-
Will that continue, the angled parking?
The parking will remain as, as it has. So yes, that angled parking will remain.
And how many parking spaces then are in that angled parking?
The-
It's, I believe between six and seven cars. Through looking at aerial images, historically, there have been about six to seven cars seen parked along that south side of the building and off the alley. And so, yeah, with the, with the administrative portion of the review of the site plan and the request that came in with that site plan to maintain, the request was to maintain essentially the existing conditions for the parking.
And we have a completed site plan now?
The, yes. The site plan that was attached as part of the agenda packet tonight is the most recent iteration of that site plan.
Yep.
Yep.
Do you have a site plan that's more up to date than the one I had?
Not, I guess, now that I'm pulling up that site plan, it does not actually illustrate the existing conditions for the angled parking, but rather, it shows the dimensions for the number of code compliant in terms of dimensions, parking spaces that could be accommodated on site, which would be four.
And so there's no requirement to have more than four spaces with your expanded number of units?
So the, the proposed expansion and the remodel would include adding additional bedrooms to the site. And parking, off-street parking for multi-dwelling structures is calculated based on the number of bedroom units. And so because there is an increase in the number of bedrooms, there were additional parking spaces that would have been required by code. However, given site constraints, the applicant submitted a waiver request to the planning director to waive the off-street parking requirements for those additional bedrooms being added. That waiver request was approved by the planning director based on several different factors. One being the current site conditions, limiting how much parking can be provided on site, the location of the site and its proximity to other downtown or higher density development and other mixed and commercial uses, proximity to KU, and just the walkability of the site, location next to a fixed transit route, and the availability of on-street parking. So in short, yes, additional off-street parking would have been required by code, but that requirement has been waived.
Thank you. And thank you very much.
Of course. Thank you.
More questions?
Any, anybody have any other questions or comments?
I saw in, there was a sentence somewhere that ADA compliant ramp is being added. Does that mean the entire structure will be ADA compliant as far as, say, like each apartment and each bedroom and all of that?
Since it was built in the mid-century, the second floor won't be accessible by ADA. There's two units that'll be accessible through that, that front door where the ramp is provided. And that's kind of our- and that's kind of our best effort at that while still preserving the historic character of the building, so.
Thank you. Are we ready for a motion?
Let's see.
Need the language.
Yeah. Let's see.
David, this is your last.
Well, yeah, no kidding. And before, before I do make a motion, I just want to say, I find this really exciting. I mean, to be able to take historic housing and upgrade it and maintain it, bring it up to code, is fantastic. It's, 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 you know, infill, you know, and, and increasing the quality of the overall housing stock near the university is, is, is wonderful. So I would like to make a motion to consider approving a special use permit, UP 24-1000, for the expansion of nonconforming residential use located at 908 Indiana Street. Let's see. And, and forward to the City Commission with a request to approve.
With the conditions listed.
With the conditions listed in the staff report, yes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If it's unanimous, Jeff? Motion carries.
Okay.
And thank you. Thank you to the applicant. Thank you, Avery. And so we're going on to item number three, Elizabeth. Is that right? Is it Elizabeth Becky that's going to present?
Yes.
Elizabeth is going to give us an update to the land development code, and the public is welcome to listen and comment after she presents. So Elizabeth, are you online?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right, let me pull up the presentation. Thanks.
It looks quiet.
So my first question as we get started is whether or not Planning Commission would like to go through the whole presentation for the benefit of any members of the public that you may have in the room. I'm not sure if you have members there who weren't there for our last discussion or haven't been involved previously. If so, we can do a full presentation, and if not, I can skip to giving you an update on the conversations that have taken place with Steering Committee and where we are in the editing process.
I'm going to see if Jeff has an opinion. Like, what do you think, Jeff? I mean, I, I'm good with just getting an update, but do you think that, you know?
I hate to turn it back, but it's really the deference of the commission, what the body was all about.
Do you get, yes, the commission have an opinion.
If I may, we've seen the presentation before, but always at mid-month meetings, and this is the first, you know, regular Planning Commission meeting we've had for the public, inviting the public to comment. So I think would probably be advisable to have a full presentation.
Yeah, let's go with that. Elizabeth, thank you.
Okay. It is, it is a little shortened up from last time, so if anyone wants to ask questions later, we can get into it. Okay, as a reminder, our project goals, we have been focusing on identifying opportunities to meet city goals, including implementing Plan 2040 and other adopted city plans, looking at creating more predictable outcomes for development, simplifying stream, simplifying and streamlining development procedures, and making the land development code more user-friendly. We have been in the process of updating the land development code for just about two years now, and we are moving into the adoption draft part of the process. We've made some big updates in the regulations, including changes in the zoning districts and uses to allow more housing types in all residential districts, allow the creation of a range of smaller lot residential development types. There are more areas in the city that will be zoned mixed use, which allows residential and other types of development, including commercial. We have been working on getting renewable energy system information built into the code, making progress on bicycle transportation connections and bicycle parking. We have eliminated the minimum parking requirement that is in the current code and replaced it with a maximum parking requirement. As we always caution here, this does not mean there will be no parking. It's just that choices about parking will be left to the development community, and those choices will be based on discussions with insurance and banking representatives about what will be required to fund and build the projects. We have changed planned development projects to require that they provide development that's above and beyond what would normally happen in a base zone district, and we've added stream buffer requirements. In the residential zoning districts, things that are changing are including an introduction of new minimum lot area standards specific to residential use types. There's an added range of housing layout options for empty lots, which will be defined as infill and redevelopment, and there's been an introduction of minimum density requirements that implement Plan 2040. Those density requirements are reflected here, and I believe Planning Commission got to see this table a couple of weeks ago when we met. We had more opportunities to discuss this with the public and have been exploring with staff developments that would, that could take place within the city that would meet these density standards to ensure that we're headed down the right path, and we are looking pretty good at the moment. What's not changing, so within the code, zoning on individual properties is not changing. This is not a rezoning effort, it is a zoning conversion. So if it is zoned something now, it may be renamed, but the zoning won't be changing from low density to high density or from residential or commercial. Single unit development, single-family development is still allowed. Existing land uses will still be allowed, so the activities and businesses changing place, taking place within the district are still allowed. And many of the currently identified land use types and associated standards are carried forward into the current code. Some have been updated and simplified or otherwise revised for understanding. Within the mixed use and commercial zoning districts, the, one of the goals of this code is to make it easier to develop more mixed use within the city, and so you can see on the table on the right side of this slide, that some of the existing commercial districts, such as the inter-neighborhood commercial and the single-dwelling residential office, have been consolidated into a single mixed-use district, and those are changed based on the scale of the development. So there's M1, which is small neighborhood mixed use. There's M2, which is mixed large neighborhood, and then M3 is mixed corridor. We still have downtown commercial, and we still have commercial center. Some of the design standards that live in those districts currently have been consolidated and updated into Article 9. Other changes include updating the use table and making sure that the uses allowed in the different zone districts are in alignment with the plan and in alignment with the context in the development area. You can read the zone, the use table in the draft that's on the project website, and it shows the uses that are allowed down the left-side column, the review procedure to allow them across the row that the use is in, and then if additional standards apply, they're in the far-right use-specific standard column. Pardon me, Article 9 includes site and structure standards. This is a great deal of content incorporated from the Community Design Manual and additionally updated residential standards. It includes standards for residential development, residential infill, and mixed use and non-residential development. Within the development standards, importantly, what's not changing, existing developments, established developments are not subject to the new design standards unless the property owners choose to redevelop. We have a note from Planning Commission at the last workshop meeting. We will add a destruction exception to this, and so if the property is destroyed by natural causes, the new standards won't apply to the redevelopment. And then also, what is not changing is the area-specific design guidelines. So the downtown area design guidelines, 8th and Penn, and the Oriad Neighborhood Design Guidelines will all be carried forward, and they will continue to apply. Article 10 is a section on mobility and connectivity. This is intended to support multimodal planning efforts in the city. There are requirements in here for new development to provide connections off the property to existing and proposed modal systems, so it could be pedestrian systems, could be bicycle systems, and then standards addressing the internal site circulation for pedestrians, bicyclists, and vehicles. So within the development, how are those things provided, connections provided? I mentioned earlier that in Article 12 and the parking standards, the city will be shifting from minimum to maximum requirements if this code is adopted. And so currently, the standards reflect the minimum number of off-street parking spaces the development must include. That will switch to the maximum number of off-streets, so it's onsite parking spaces that the development is limited to. Parking can still be provided, and in a related change, the city is working on a parking management program. So that will be intended to help manage the parking within the city's rights of way related to development that could be moving parking from onsite to offsite. So those two things go together, and that process is, the parking management program is something the city's moving forward. The code also includes bicycle parking and design requirements that are set according to national standards. We've made some changes in the administrative procedures. Hang on a second. So some of the changes that we can focus on for this evening, there are some transitional provisions in those procedures. They impact how either the existing code or the new code will apply for developments that have multi-step processes. So if you had to have preliminary plat approved at one point in time and you come to final plat later, which code are you developing under? The code, the new code proposes allowing administrative extension of approvals or permits to simplify the process of getting an extension when a project's been delayed. There are updated review criteria for planned unit developments. There are, and for preliminary development plans, updated review criteria for land development co-text amendments, and these are intended to provide greater clarity to applicants about the city's expectations for project approval. And there is an administrative adjustment process. So this is administrative adjustments, making changes to the code that are lesser than a variance, and these are intended to allow an applicant to request a standard upfront or during the development process without having to go through the variance process. So this should move more quickly if the change is within the requirements, the boundaries of what this adjustment allows. What has stayed the same in the procedures? All the major processes have stayed the same, and they'll be moving forward. So zoning amendment has stayed the same, special use permit has stayed the same. The reviewing bodies stay the same. The rezoning review criteria stay the same. So this is a long list to say there aren't a lot of changes in the procedures because they are, sorry about that, they're statutory for the most part, or they, they work on case law or other criteria that the city needs to follow. Subdivision procedures stay the same. Nonconformities stay the same. There's a short section added for nonconforming site features, and the violations enforcement stay the same also. So finally, along the lines of that last update, we did a significant amount of outreach in May. This comes from the completed events on the project website. So you can see, between the 15th and 18th, we kind of hopscotched around the city and did a variety of different events, and we had nice turnout and very good comments on that. And so I've got a brief summary of some of what we heard, and we'll be posting those comments on the website shortly, so everyone can take a look at them. So I'm going to stop here. That's the update. I'm going to move into some of the updates that Steering Committee has talked about and asked us to make in the regulations. We will be making a change that allows lot size averaging across development. So the goal of this change is to say if you're doing a larger development and you want to have potentially some larger lots in there and still meet density requirements, then you can do a variety of lot sizes as long as you average the minimum density allowed in the zoning district. The same change that I talked about a second ago, we'll make a change that allows residential structures destroyed by natural causes to be rebuilt at the existing density. We've been having a conversation about allowing accessory dwelling units, ADUs, so that is like your mother-in-law suite or your granny flat to count as residential density. When we're thinking about doing a minimum density in development, some communities don't count ADUs and some do, and for some of the development, the city might see allowing the ADUs to count as either one unit of density or a half a unit of density may help promote density at the levels that Plan 2040 calls for. We've discussed adding a block-based maximum lot frontage requirement so that infill or redevelopment structures better fit in an existing neighborhood. So the way to think about this is if, if I've got a 10,000-square-foot lot in a neighborhood and I have 100 feet of frontage, but most of the lots adjacent to me or across the street from me have more along the lines of a 55 or 60-foot lot frontage, the regulations will say that the infill or development of that lot needs to meet the average of those lot frontages or needs to meet the maximum that is set for that area based on the surrounding block. So the goal is to keep a scale requirement for the lot and structures that could go into that site, so we are discouraging larger development in the area. This should be limited only really to infill, and we've been working with staff to make sure that we're creating an infill development that's flexible enough to work in a variety of areas, but that is not so broadly drafted that we're capturing other areas that really should be treated as new development. Similarly, we're going to add some regulations that limit lot combinations to a maximum of two lots in zoning districts with a minimum lot size less than 10,000 square feet, and that's intended to get at that existing lots being combined in neighborhoods and being developed with structures that are significantly out of scale for the area. We will be making a change to require multi-unit structures to be designed so that the entrance of one unit is oriented to the front of the lot, so it has more in keeping of the single-family or two-family development that might be taking place around it. And then when we look at the single-unit to duplex conversion that's allowed in the draft, we are going to amend that slightly to require that any existing parking on the site be retained, so that parking can't be removed as part of that conversion, and the site will still have whatever existing off-street parking is there before, prior to the conversion. And that should be something that we do that addresses some of the parking concerns about going from single unit to duplex. I'm going to keep going through a few more updates, and then we can back up and talk about anything that you guys would like to discuss. So the Steering Committee still has some issues in discussion, some of which came from the Planning Commission. One is how to treat the range of housing types. One is how to treat the range of housing types that we see moving into the future. This was Planning Commission's discussion about are we being future-thinking enough in terms of manufactured prefab or modular housing? So we'll bring that back to Steering Committee at their June meeting. We also have an open question about how the city, the LDC, should be addressing infill requirements for sidewalk, sidewalk or pedestrian or potentially bikeway infrastructure. So where we have a neighborhood that doesn't have existing or full connections made, and we see infill development or redevelopment, how do we treat fairly those properties based on the idea that, you know, particularly with residential development, we may not see a lot of redevelopment over time? And so how do we want to adjust regulations to address that? Additional questions that were from the Planning Commission go back to the retail market impact analysis. So should the rezoning application still be using it? What criteria are needed in the code to assess the information from that? And then the question that you guys spent a little time chatting about earlier this evening, should the conditional zoning be retained with a requirement to submit a follow-up or concurrent application for text amendment? I think this is, so that's it for things on Steering Committee's next-meeting agenda. And then some of the questions that we heard from the public, from the community, from our outreach, were fairly limited in nature. We have some comments about how they want to see things addressed in neighborhoods. But we heard primarily about parking for residential units, a few questions about ADUs, ADUs, how do they work as short-term rentals? How do they work as affordable rentals? And then how do they work with the proposed changes to the occupancy limit that's in the draft regulations? And then also, the community was asking questions about how does the increased occupancy limit work? So that's kind of a rundown of what we've been doing since we saw you last, and I'm going to back up and ask your preference for what the Commission would like to talk about this evening.
So I think at this point, should we ask for public comment, Jeff, before we bring it back to the Commission?
If the Commission has any questions, I'd like to have answered in advance, but I think that's fine, because that may also be questions the public may have, too.
Sure, sure. Any questions from the Commission to Elizabeth?
Here, I'll have one.
Go ahead.
What, Elizabeth, what is a redevelopment zone?
I don't think we have a redevelopment zone. We just have redevelopment.
Okay.
I just have a general question about process here tonight in terms of the level of discussion that we're going to have. I imagine we're going to be discussing this maybe several times going forward. So what kind of level are you thinking about discussing at this point? I mean, I've got a lot of notes throughout that are really nitpicky in the weeds. That's probably not what we're doing tonight, but will eventually come out, and I don't know when. We would be going to, you know, Article 20-902, Paragraph 3 type of comment versus some overall...
Right. Will this be a good opportunity for us to go into the weeds, Jeff? Or do you think we'll have like a mid-month where that would be more appropriate?
I think you're going to have an opportunity to go really into the weeds, if not the roots, and maybe even, you know, the mantle, and keep going down quite a bit. I think that's going to be coming up in a future meeting on that one. Really, tonight, it's an opportunity for those big-level questions. It's an opportunity for the public to give comment and provide feedback on, on the process as a whole. That way, you can hear it, and also we can hear it, make sure that we're encapsulating that correctly, and then bring that back to have that sub-level discussion about, you know, the comma in 2903-F2. So I hope that kind of, that's our, our hope for this evening, and we hope the Commission will entertain that as part of that.
General schedule-wise, Jeff, can you give us, I know it's not baked, but what is the, like, do you have a sort of a potential schedule?
We're still working a little bit on the schedule right now. We've got some things penciled out to see how it would mesh between Planning Commission, Steering Committee, and kind of what that timeline looks like going forward. So we're kind of working June, July as our, our angle at the moment, trying to figure out what that schedule backing out of it looks like, so that both the draft has time to be available for the public to review and comment on, but also everybody has time to read it and digest it, and if they have questions, to come back to it. So we're working at a little bit kind of in behind-the-scenes right now to make sure we get enough time built into the schedule for those causes.
Okay, thank you.
I have a follow-up. I just wanted to make sure that, it's my understanding, there's so many different moving parts and different entities that are kind of involved in this, having a Steering Committee and all of that. So when we do get into the weeds, I'm, I'm assuming that we will do that at a meeting before we're planning on taking a vote on it, or at least in a time in which the response won't be, well, if you go down that route, it has to go back to the Steering Committee in the sense that, like, I don't want people to have really great thoughts and comments, and it kind of be too late because the Steering Committee, the process is too cumbersome or something, to send back to the Steering Committee and all of that. Does that make sense? So I want to, want to hear what you have to say about the weeds in time to be able to think through them, and then actually have whichever body is the appropriate body to be able to, to think through them before having to make a decision on, on those without the appropriate entity also weighing in. Does that make sense? Because I've just heard a few things that say, suggest that, well, no matter what the Planning Commission has to say, the Steering Committee is the final, or they can send on what they want. And so I'm just trying to make sure that we have, I, I understand the process in a way that will allow me to feel comfortable hearing the weeds at the appropriate time and not when it's too late. Does that make sense? Not that I have a long list. I know you're all probably very worried at the moment about my long list. My list is actually not that long.
You didn't bring any boxes.
I didn't bring any boxes today, so, but, but I do, but I am very interested, interested in what other people have found in the weeds.
Elizabeth will probably stop me when I run this thing off the rails again, but it really, you know, it goes back to the memo that we put forward to you all about maybe two or three months ago about, it's Steering Committee's going to have their chance. They're really given the high-level, the big discussion conversations, those big 30,000-foot look at setting those parameters, and then you would make a recommendation to the governing body as per state statute. So you will have a chance to do it. Now, if you make a change that's so substantial, or departs from where the Steering Committee is at, it would go back to Steering Committee, because at some point, they're going to still have to make a recommendation based on the resolution the City Commission has put in place establishing them. And they may come back with a recommendation of, we agree with Planning Commission, or no, we don't agree with Planning Commission at all. We think that is not in the spirit of what we're trying to do. And that's, that's that part of, in that memo we kind of highlight, is it can probably bounce between the two of them for a minute, potentially.
As long as it'll bounce. I just wanted to make sure that the bouncing was, was able to happen, that's all.
I would, I would just keep in mind is that you've had both Commissioner Carpenter and Commissioner Rexrode as part of the Steering Committee from, from the beginning, and Commissioner Carter, excuse me, Commissioner Carter, Commissioner Carpenter and Commissioner Rexrode are still serving on that. So both of them are still attending, they're still both providing the input from the, from the body here. So you do have representation on there. They're bringing the discussions that you're having at your mid-month, and you're having, even during the course of your business meetings, when they're seeing things brought up, they're bringing that back to us to make sure the Steering Committee is hearing that too, and recognizing that needs to be a change in code, or maybe that's not a change in code, we want, we like it as, the way it is. So you do have that representation going both directions on this.
And, and if some of us want to get into the weeds prior to a mid-month, or is there an opportunity for us to interact with Elizabeth or the Steering Committee? I mean, do we just go to the Steering Committee meetings and engage that? What is the recommendation there if we, you know, if we don't want to wait?
You know, if, if you don't want to wait, you can always submit the comments to, we have an email address for the project website. You can submit to that, and we can take that in and make sure that we're putting that through the process as, you know, as we're going through the drafting stage. You can also wait to the conversations, because they may not, may want that conversation to help inform, do you want to even bring that up as an item in, in the totality of the conversation? Because Steering Committee may have had that conversation, decided that's not where we want to be at, and so there's a lot of ways to get involved. You can also, of course, you know, look online. You will have another mid-month session that'll be coming up about the Land Development Code. So that may be a time to both highlight questions and raise concerns you're seeing in there. So there's still a few more times down the line here to both provide comment, but also really get into the details of the code.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
For me personally, if there are members of the public here tonight to comment on this, I think it'd be useful to hear what they have to say, and then we can return to additional discussion and questions, but...
Yeah, this might be a good time to, to do that. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on, please, go ahead, sir. You have, you have three minutes.
Hi, Planning Commissioners. My name is Phil Collison, and I'm here representing the Lawrence Association of Neighborhoods. And I can also state that I'm here representing the East Lawrence Neighborhood Association, and that we, ELNA, does support the work that LAND is doing to represent a coalition of neighborhoods, including our own, my own. LAND appreciates that Brad and a few other members of the Land Development Code Steering Committee came to talk with us about the content of what was in the draft version of the proposed Land Development Code. That meeting was just two short weeks ago on May 15th, and the draft code at that time was not complete nor final. The third big section, and I'm not sure what the proper lingo is, but there was a, a section it had not been, become a part of the draft code at that time. Based on the comments made by our LAND folks, it was noted that this is a living document, and we found that each time a new draft was submitted, we had to review again those already reviewed sections that had been revised. As a result of that revel, of the revel, of that revelation at that meeting, and the fact that it is a living document of over 500 pages, we sent a letter to the Steering Committee on May 17th requesting that once a final draft is compiled, that there be a 90-day public comment period set aside so that LAND reps and citizens in general can review this document. That's from a final draft. We think this is a reasonable request. That document is very big. It is full of legalese, and in order to truly review it and stay awake, with time for questions to be answered and feedback to be generated, we needed, we need enough time to be able to perform that review. This new code will have an even, even bigger impact on the future of Lawrence and its neighborhoods than a Plan 2040 that took five years, over five years. Please consider factoring this request into the process that this will follow through to get approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment?
Melinda Ball.
Go ahead, Melinda.
Hello. I want to thank you for this time, and I might be getting into the weeds for just a moment. I'm jumping in early. I've gone to a couple of the public opportunities where you can come in and make comment, write down and discuss, which I've appreciated. And I've, I've also sent in a public comment, which again, I'm sorry if this is getting into the weeds, or if I'm too early, but I'm trying to get ahead of, of what I can. One part of what I've seen with the Land Development Code, which I would like to see get a little bit more robust and strengthened, is around floodplain development. I know in the early 2000s, when our current Land Development Code was being written, that there was an attempt at that time to pretty much prohibit floodplain development. And that is because just about nine years prior to that was the 93 flood, and so a lot of money was spent to recover from that, and there was, it was really on the minds of, of the city and, and, and planning at the time. So of course, it didn't happen, but I, I'd like for that to be revisited. Primarily, we've seen more storms, climate change, all of that, and, and the cost would be even greater. So for, on a financial aspect as well as safety and environmentally as well, I really would like to see prohibit floodplain development, or to mirror, as, as I mentioned on the, online in the code version online, it would be nice if, if can't ban outright to match flood, regulatory floodplain to mirror regulatory floodway, so that similar capability between the two. So anyways, sorry for getting in the weeds early, but thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Drew, anybody else online?
I'm not seeing any.
Anybody else in the room? If not, I'll bring it back to the Commission for any last questions or comments for Elizabeth or for us.
I have some larger.
Yeah, go ahead.
Not, not in the weeds, not in the weeds yet, but just some general questions, observations. When I was reading through it, there are a number of places throughout the document that say one decision or another is at the discretion of the Planning Director. Certain exceptions to code, new code can be varied according to the Planning Director. It seems like there's an awful lot of weight on the Planning Director, even though I know that phrase probably means a multitude of people, not just one person, so. But it does, it does speak to, there's an awful lot going on, and I wonder about the weight of those decisions and all those little changes and exceptions, and at the behest or at the decision of the Planning Director, whether the planning department has the capacity to handle all that. That's my one big question. The other big observation I have is that I think the, one of the weak links in this in terms of community buy-in and neighborhood buy-in is enforcement. I'm, I know just from talking to people on the street and hearing people, hearing a lot of questions from the public, that there's a lot of concern about the changes to density and how that will impact the feel of the neighborhood. And I know a lot of people who are fine with the infill, they're just wondering, like, say, for example, neighborhoods near the universities, absolutely concerned about those properties being snapped up by landlords, being made into student rentals, and what does that do to the, the neighborhood? Those kinds of concerns. A lot of those concerns might be dealt with if we had the enforcement capacity to deal with noise ordinances and capacity ordinances, how many individuals can live in a unit, those sorts of details. And I know right now enforcement for many of these codes is not sufficient. And so I worry about, and I would like to, to see the City Commission consider what that means in terms of community buy-in and implementing this, is what we do about the enforcement of these new land development codes that we're putting in place. So it's just some general comments.
Elizabeth, I'm going to ask a question that has possibly already been, you know, considered, but I would have expected to see it on one of these lists. And a couple of times, I've brought up issues around parking and things like deliveries and ride shares, and I'm wondering if that's something that has already been discussed and discounted, or if it's just considered a minor enough issue that it's not worth mentioning.
Wrong on both counts, actually. It has been discussed, and because the curb management that, that we've been talking about, so where does Lyft park, and where does the Amazon truck park, and how do we deal with the fact that we have, we have more than neighborhood traffic going in neighborhoods? Is, it's a right-of-way management issue. We talked about this, actually, just with staff on Monday, or Tuesday, sorry. And so we're taking that back to MSO as something that comes out of this code for them to think about in keeping with the parking changes and density changes, that aspect needs to be built into their work as they move forward. So it has been discussed, considered, and moved to the people that have some control over it.
That's fantastic. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Elizabeth, I know that you have talked on other occasions about the influence of covenants.
Yes.
And zoning applications. Will there be a definitive statement as to just what those relationships are in the code?
So, the code says, in the general provisions at the front, that it is not the city's job to enforce covenants. Covenants are allowed to exist under Kansas law, but the city makes its regulations separately from the private agreements that are covenants. So, I think we can, I'm not sure, Commissioner Aldridge, if you're thinking that we put something in explaining to applicants those two different things, more so than us just saying, "You might have covenants," and that is a private agreement. I think one of the things that we've been kind of talking around is, what is the educational piece of this code? So, let me stop talking at you and ask if you're looking for clarification on that issue for people who are potentially using the code, or if you're looking for us to say something along the lines of, "Your covenants are still in effect."
Well, I was really looking for some clarity, because I've certainly heard the statements that neighborhoods will be treated differently depending on whether or not they have covenants. And if they have covenants, they will control. There won't be any...
Yeah, okay. Thank you for clarifying that for me. I appreciate it. So, from the city's perspective, and I certainly defer to the city attorney on this, the neighborhoods are not treated any differently. The regulations apply to the zone districts. However, the neighborhoods that have covenants in place, to the extent that those covenants are enforced, they have a standard that is more restrictive than the city's code, and so they will not be subject to some of the things that are allowed in the code because of those covenants. And I step back and ask if Jeff, or Randy, or Becky want to step in on me for that one.
I would just, no, I would agree with Elizabeth, because typically, when you get to a covenant, it's an agreement between two private parties, and the city doesn't usually get into that. So, if there is an agreement that prohibits something or allow, or, sorry, prohibits something that is allowed by code, that's an agreement between the parties and not something the city could do or alter effectively. Now, if it's not allowed by the land development code or not allowed by the zoning district, that's a little bit different. That would be what the conversation is, as you all would tend to see, but covenants and those are not something that the planning office or the city could work in, because we're not usually a party to those documents.
I'm still having a little trouble understanding. So, if a neighborhood that has covenants disagrees with the zoning that is applied to it, and they do not want an infill lot to have six dwelling units instead of one dwelling unit, their only recourse is to do what?
It would depend on what's in the covenants, quite honestly. It would just depend on the document that they have in place. Because the base zoning would still be the base zoning, so it would be permitted by the base district as possibility. But if there is something in the covenants that has a further restriction on it, that would be subject to that restriction that they have in place and be enforced subject to how that document is agreed to.
So, it would be enforced through the court system rather than through the city?
My understanding is correct, because we would not enforce a covenant. We don't have that ability.
Okay. Thank you.
Jeff, what about a general, so my neighborhood gets zoned, and we disagree with the zoning, do we have a remedy for that? Or can we come to the city and say, "Hey, we don't think it should be R1, we think it should be R3," or vice versa? Is there some kind of petition process?
So, as you have currently with rezonings, you can, people could file a protest petition with that, and that's part of state statute, so that would be retained as part of the new code going forward. And the state statute has very specific requirements about how that is done and square footages that reply and some details to that. So, that would all be carried forward as part of that. Now, if somebody wanted to rezone a property, that would be the property owner's discretion on applying for that one.
I see. But it would be at a property level, not at a neighborhood level, right? I mean, you'd see that happening, sort of an individual property owner saying, "Hey, I don't agree with the zoning," as opposed to like a whole neighborhood. Is it possible for a whole neighborhood to come? It's possible.
It's possible, yeah. There was one five, six years ago? About five or six years ago, a neighborhood came forward and asked for that, and the city commission entertained it. So, it is possible.
Okay. So, that would be through the city commission, not through like the court system? That would be through the...
It'd just be a normal rezoning process.
Normal rezoning process.
Yeah.
And you could still have covenants, right? So, I mean, there'd still be the ability to put covenants in place, just like there are currently, right?
Right, yeah. There's nothing in the city code that prohibits it, because state statute is what governs covenants.
Yeah, so you could do everything you can currently do.
I had a couple, I don't know if there are necessarily questions, but a couple of points that were raised to me by some public comments that I thought were worth mentioning, or at least that will be on my mind maybe when we get into the weeds. And when you were talking about the administrative decisions and also talking about the floodplain, I noticed that the flood permits for a building in the floodplain would now be administrative. And I was just wondering kind of the reason for that switch, or maybe I misunderstand that switch. But when I looked at the table, floodplain permits were in the administration portion of it. So, I was just curious about that and the decision for that, and if that's a change because we have recently had conversations about building in floodplains. And so, I was just curious about that. Not that we have to go into it today, but that, I was wondering if I misunderstood that, or if, is it anybody else?
Two-part answer on that. That table, that's in administrative permits, that is still a draft piece of it, and that was the consultant team asking staff, are these things that are typically done administratively? And if so, do we need to have more information in the code? So, if it is not currently done administratively, that will come out. We will clean that up. But I think are not floodplain permits typically done administratively?
Yeah, floodplain permits are currently done administratively.
Okay, so like if we were to see something where there were conversations about building in the floodplain, the permit process would happen, and then the planning commission would still have that conversation about the actual project? Is that kind of how that works?
No, administrative permits are approved completely by staff. Are you, how are you guys doing it right now?
Yeah, floodplain permits are currently administratively reviewed by staff. Now, if there was a rezoning to the FP overlay district, that would come before the planning commission as part of that. That usually where you'd run into that one. But a floodplain permit is an administrative process, and just so the commission knows that when the floodplain section of the code is changed, or goes through there, it is reviewed by the state and other entities to make sure it conforms with those other items. So, as this code is going through the process, it would be sent to the state to make sure it meets the requirements of the state floodplain process.
So, this wouldn't change things that we're currently doing. We just have seen stuff in different, come before us because of different requests.
Right, there's different points that would route to you, like if it was part of an overlay zoning district, or if it came up as part of a, maybe a development plan, or if there was an easement for a drainage way that was put on a property, you would typically see it as part of that. But the floodplain permit would always route to the administrative, as it has been.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I have a question. Somewhere I read in the draft that as density was increasing, so I noticed in the table, the percent that the principal use, the percent of the lot that the principal use can cover is increasing, and that there will be a sort of commensurate review of stormwater management along with that increase in density. What stage are we, where are we with that, in incorporating that into the code?
So, the stormwater management is predominantly taken care of outside of the code. In the code, we reference that stormwater management is something that needs to happen on the property. But because it's a technical review based on, you know, the engineering aspects of the volume of water that the site needs to manage, that gets taken out to standards that are adopted and implemented by MSO. So, let me back up to the question. Are you asking, like, if someone is doing development, when does that take place? When does that stormwater review take place? Or are you asking, will there be additional information in this draft?
I guess I would, the way I read it, is that there would be some sort of commensurate change in stormwater management, given the increase in density. And so, that there would be looking at the stormwater management requirements, whether that's, at what stage it is, at the fact that there will have to be more drainage ways, that we'll have different infrastructure in order to manage the increased density. I mean, is that also an ongoing review?
So, the city staff that does stormwater management, we've talked to them all along the way, and including going through the different aspects of density increase, and it's their opinion that the current regulations can handle the changes that the city will need to see to increase density, that the city will be able to tackle that over time with the appropriate regulations that are in place.
Okay, thank you.
Just one thing I would note, as part of this process, and I think it's been kind of brought up multiple times along the way, but this would also bring up stream buffer ordinances that would come into place on this one. There would be a grading process that would be brought in that we don't currently have in place right now. So, there's a lot of other things that would be kind of not stormwater, but stormwater-adjacent items that are really coming in that we've never had before in the code. And so, this kind of first look at some of those, you're starting to see in the current consolidated draft.
I have a question. I think I raised this a few months ago, or maybe six months ago now, but I was just wondering what kind of conversations there were around encouraging or requiring renewable energy in new builds or in retrofitting builds. I've had some people just suggest they love the Merck and the solar on the Merck, and so I've heard that actually quite a bit in the last month and a half, and as this has come up. And then, you know, the new Dylans was proposed, and so people were like, "Oh, they should build a parking lot like the Merck." And so, I'm just curious what conversations were had about that and the city's interest in encouraging renewable energy along those lines.
So, accessory solar, like the parking lot solar panels at the Merck are allowed in the code? In terms of building retrofit and building energy, that's all handled by building code? That's outside of zoning code. So, we've focused on things that you can do on the site to get to renewable energy and making them more easily allowed within the code, to the extent that they're challenging it all within the current code.
I could jump on that, just because it's the same topic. I was wondering, as part of the code, one of my weedy questions was, is that solar, sort of like, I was looking at the landscaping part and thinking that if a parking lot of business wanted to put solar over a parking lot, I'm wondering, can there be a trade-off there in terms of the requirements for landscaping? Because obviously, that might not mesh well with required landscaping if they wanted to. Is there an incentive somehow in the code for, let's see, reducing parking spaces? Or, sorry, increasing parking spaces if you put solar over them? That kind of workaround to get an incentive to put solar parking?
So, we've removed the parking space requirement. So, that will be up to the applicants to figure out how they want to do the layout to get there. But I hear what you're saying. I think what I would want us to talk about a little bit is the size of effective parking lot solar structures and the offset provided by trees in terms of shade on the site. So, I think we can, you know, if planning commission's interested, we can back up and see if there are examples of communities that have done that balance well.
Related to that, also, I didn't notice, or I couldn't find in the code, that there was any provision about with infill development, the potential for blocking solar arrays. So, somebody has a roof, but then the infill next door, the lot is, the building is a little bit higher, there's no provision for maintaining the property with the solar arrays there access to sunlight.
Correct. We haven't gone down that path. Providing solar access is an incredibly challenging subject, because you're taking one property owner's property preferences and impacting someone else's private property next door. And so, we can provide encouragement, which doesn't go a long way in the code. But I think that if the city wants to walk down the path of doing solar access, that would probably be best served in a separate code outside of this one.
A separate code? What would that mean?
Well, or you would do a solar access amendment to this code.
It'd probably be a pretty substantial undertaking to kind of go through what that would look like for iterations on it. It would either probably be, I don't know, it'd either be an amendment to 20, or possibly either another standalone code, like would you see with chapter 22 for historic resources? I don't know what that would look like. It would just depend on the complexity, but it's one of the things we've kind of been mulling and trying to understand, both, not just from the planning standpoint that you all see here, but also from our building safety and our permit teams and understanding what that looks like for both that side of the coin, but also our sustainability commitment as a city. So, trying to really weigh that up and what that looks like is kind of still hard to tell. We're still trying to figure out what that kind of would look like at the end.
Commissioner Ashworth, could I just ask a clarifying question? Are you talking about just access to sunlight, or are you talking about, say, a pre-existing solar array if new construction blocks?
Yes.
The latter.
Yeah, the latter. So, that you have a solar array and...
You've spent however many tens of thousands of dollars to add this to your property, and then new construction blocks your...
Yes.
I mean, what would be, that's, I mean, that isn't really, in a way, that isn't really a land use thing, but boy, is that a civil...
Right, it's a complicated subject, but it wasn't mentioned in here. The only thing, the one thing that was mentioned is that for solar arrays, and it actually states rooftop solar arrays must, there's another weedy thing, it needs to be blocked from view. And I'm a little taken aback by that, that a rooftop solar would have to be blocked from view, because I'm thinking about the materials that would be required on a rooftop to block the view of a solar array. One, what might shade the solar array? And two, might not be structurally sound enough, weather conditions, hail, wind. There's no provision for that. It just says that someone on a golf course shouldn't have to look at somebody's solar array, which I found a little unnecessary. But, but back to the question, that was just me going into the weeds. But back to your question, yes, this whole business of solar access is something that we might need to deal with down the line, because we're trying to encourage more solar renewable energy, plus not only solar, but also wind. And so, I had a question about why is it that the maximum height of a turbine has to meet the maximum height of a building in the, I don't have the commercial development? So, there's a lot of renewable energy questions I have.
Commissioner Carter, I don't think I'm going to have a good answer for you, because it's all a little, in the literature, it's very hypothetical in a lot of ways. I will speak from a little bit of experience on one of these, and it wasn't quite for solar, but I worked on a project one time where one property bought a view shed easement off the other property to ensure that they would have sunlight. And so, it was an item between two parties that basically, one party bought the development right to protect the sunlight on their own property from their neighboring property for that particular reason. It wasn't for solar, it was for a different purpose, but it was basically a view shed easement. That's usually an agreement between two private parties, not something... That's usually an agreement between two private parties, not something that's governed by code. But as solar becomes, you know, more prevalent and the way things go, I could suspect that it'll probably be something we see a lot more in planning literature in the very near future. But that's one that may be optional out there, but it's not in code. It's more of a discussion between neighbors at the end of the day.
I have a follow-up question on the covenants issue, because I thought I had a fair comprehension of this, and then more I thought about it, I just found myself, confused myself. So Jeff, just to confirm, so if there are existing covenants, this code doesn't do anything to those. Those are what they are, they're going to continue to be enforceable or not, but that's between two private parties. It's removed from the city.
Correct.
And the ability to put covenants on your property still exists. That's something that you can do that's still permitted under this, this potential new code. And I think that generally makes sense when we're talking about situations where the code provides a certain restriction of this magnitude, and then a covenant provides a narrower restriction, that you're doing a tighter restriction, that works. But where I'm having trouble understanding this is where the code imposes an affirmative requirement. And in particular, I'm thinking about the minimum density requirements, that could a property owner get around those by just putting a covenant on their property, saying, this property will only ever have a single-family residence? And then as a result of that, the city doesn't have any means of saying, no, you need to have two units here, you need to have three units, et cetera. How does that tension work?
Thankfully, there's probably a lot smarter people on the call than me, but my understanding is when you have something like that, the more restrictive would apply, because you can always, like you said, narrow down. But if there is a conflict between, in your sense of, you know, the code says you have to have two, but then the covenant says you have to have one, if I'm following your argument, I don't know the answer off the top of my head, but I think typically is, is that the city code, we can't remove a covenant restriction, so that you'd end up with almost an unbuildable potential there. Because you can't comply with the city code, but then your covenant also won't let you go up to city code to meet it. So you may be into an unbuildable situation. And I would...
This is Randy Larkin, if I may step in here just for a second. I don't know if this is going to exactly answer the question, but typically, the city is immune to covenants. We have a law that says, you know, this land can have a certain number of people. Now, if there's a covenant on that property, then that becomes an issue between the landowners, and we don't really, we don't pay attention, we don't care, and that becomes between them. To the extent that the covenant is not something that's violative of public policy or against state law, it's legal between individuals. So it'd be between the person who has the property, and maybe a homeowners association or something else. But the city does not get involved with those. Those are basically private matters between homeowners, other homeowners, homeowners and homeowners association, if that makes sense.
Right. So that does make sense to some extent. But if we had a covenant, if a neighborhood placed covenants, if the property owners placed covenants on their properties, saying that our property will only ever have, for, into perpetuity, our property will only ever have a single-family residence on it. And now this code imposes additional requirements with respect to not maximum density, but minimum density, that you have to have a certain number of units available here. Somebody goes to redevelop one of those plots, the city says, look, you need to have two units here, and the property owner says, I can't, there's this covenant on the property. And I think what Jeff said is not satisfying, but it makes perfect sense to me legally, that you're just, you're just stuck then. You can't comply with the covenant or with the city requirement, and so you're not able to develop that property in the way that had initially been anticipated. Is that the rightful conclusion?
Well, that's how it'd be worked out, but it would be have between the individual homeowners and the homeowners association to enforce that. City doesn't care. The city says, yeah, you get, you get two. You can put the, this many things on the property, the owner does it, and if no one objects to it, or no one fights it, it's done. It might be in violation of the covenant, and there'd be somebody else, the right, the obligation would be on the homeowners association or other homeowners then to challenge that person in court. But for the purposes of the city, you know, you have to have two, two structures. Now, if the person doesn't want to go against the covenant, or go against their neighbors, or go against the homeowners association, that's a totally different question. But we're really not limited by covenants.
Got it.
But the code could be inconsistent. I mean, because we're having, we're saying you have to have a minimum. Does the current code say that it has to be a minimum? Like, so in like an RM 12, is there a minimum that you, you have to build at least sixplex or something?
No, current code is a maximum. So in RM 12, it's not more than 12 dwelling units per acre. But what you'll see in the current land development code, and also in the proposed land development code, is detached dwelling is permitted in almost all the residential districts, but for one of the new proposals, which is the very high density. So by table, you could do a detached dwelling in R1, 2, 3, and 4. So that would carry you up to RM 32 of the current code. So you would have, you're very unlikely to run into a scenario where you have a base set that would be there, because you could still get to a detached dwelling. Now, the question would be, is, does it meet the dwelling units per acre conversation if you had to go down that path? But that's a little bit more complex.
Yeah, but by flipping it to have it be a minimum, not a maximum, you are kind of creating that situation where potentially, somebody can't build because it's not consistent with the code, because the code requires two of something, and the covenant says, no, this is, that's not allowed.
Yeah, that's correct. And so, you know, the kind of the calculus there is that without putting a minimum density in place, overall, the city's not going to meet some of the development goals that were adopted in Plan 2040. So it is entirely possible there will be properties out there along these lines. But, you know, I think that in my experience, a lot of communities, before code goes into adoption, spend time thinking about worst-case scenarios that don't necessarily turn out that way. So yeah, there will be one or two problem properties, and staff will probably work to figure out a way to get them to be able to do something. It's not, you know, it's not the goal of the code, that people are frozen out, but it is one of the goals of the code, that development density increases.
So in other communities that have done this, have made this flip, has this been something that, I mean, I don't, sorry, I don't follow, follow planning outside of Douglas County much, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, no, it's not uncommon, and it is, it is, it is successful in other communities. I don't know how they've solved individual covenant problems.
Well, I don't know the, right, I don't know the answer on this particular point, but I guess this perhaps is part of the reason Commissioner Eldridge raised the issue, is that there is a fair amount of concern in the community about the introduction of the minimum requirement, in that it's a radical shift, and there is a good public policy imperative for that. But it is a shift nonetheless, and I think there has been some discussion in the community that, okay, in particular neighborhoods, particularly those on, in close proximity to the university, that regardless of what's going to be put upon us by this new code, we still have this other tool available, which is that we have the rights of private property owners to put these covenants on our properties to ensure that there is tighter limitations and restrictions on, on development in our particular neighborhood. And it seems like that is not a viable option to constituencies within the community that are trying to protect their neighborhoods or their, their properties in that way. And that, in fact, they would just be subject to the same broad sweep of minimum requirements that everybody is subject to. And whether or not that's good or bad, open for debate, but that is, that is the issue, I think.
Right. So some of the, some of the changes that we have shown on this slide, that the steering committee has asked to make to the draft, are working to address the impact of, you know, those potential development changes in existing neighborhoods. Where particularly around the university, the big concern is that, you know, someone will buy up a number of lots, and they'll turn it into student housing. And so the changes to establish a maximum lot frontage and to limit the lot combinations should help in that respect without having to have covenants in place. And, sorry, just completely lost my train of thought on that. The density, when we go back and do the math on the density, it's not that neighborhoods are going to see, you know, what was single-family taken down and replaced by a sixplex. You have to have a fairly substantial lot size to even get to the minimum lot size required to put a duplex in. I believe you have to have over 14,000 square feet of lot. And for a lot of the neighborhoods around KU, that's, that is not going to be the lot size that someone gets if they buy one lot. So we're trying to provide that level of scaled infill or redevelopment without those neighborhoods having to, you know, go to the extent of putting covenants in, because once you're subdivided and those lots are sold, that's not a super easy thing to do. But still allow some gentle density to take place, so you could go from single to duplex, or you could go from single to, single plus an ADU, right? Which was the discussion about allowing one unit, one unit credit for the ADU. And I think on a lot of those lots, putting an ADU in right now would be acceptable in the neighborhood. So I appreciate the questions that you guys are putting out there, and it's just taken me a minute to get back to the idea of, yep, this discussion is taking place. And what are some code-based approaches to make sure that the redevelopment that could take place in those areas isn't some complete deviation from the norm of what's there right now?
I have a clarifying question about dwelling and units, so that I'm a little lost on. So in the residential districts, like the large ones, R1, I read that there's no more than two attached dwellings, but when I look in the use table, it says you can have up to four units. So am I reading that, I don't know if I'm reading that incorrectly, how I, if you could clarify?
I don't, yeah, I don't have it open right now, and it could be a mistake on our part, so I will go back and double-check. I think the way it should read is, and this might have been a correction out of steering committee, they decided to limit the number of units that you could have on the lot in R1. And so I'll go back and check their notes and get that clarified, and send a message back out to you about where we went with that, or send it out to the entire planning commission. But I don't know if that's a mistake, or if it is, if there's a nuance in that I'm missing in this conversation.
I could just be misreading this, so it just seemed that was too different.
Yeah, and you could be reading it totally right, too. So let me get back in and check.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that up. And I did want to say, you know, Jeff earlier told everybody they could submit to the project website, and particularly if you have questions that are not super substantive, that you don't think planning commission and steering committee should take up, and you just have caught us with typos or with something that doesn't read consistently, the sooner you can submit those, the faster we'll get into them and read them with all of the other comments and get them into the next draft. So don't feel like, you know, if it's something exactly like this, like, hey, this reads inconsistently, that doesn't take a big policy discussion on the part of planning commission, that is probably consultant cleanup. So please feel free. We are always welcoming of questions and comments like that.
Jeff, I'm seeing that we've paused a little bit here. When will be our next opportunity to engage with Elizabeth, ask questions, that kind of thing?
It'd be your next mid-month meeting.
Next mid-month, okay.
And then we'll probably be, I guess we're still kind of penciling that out, but we definitely have it on for your next mid-month, and it'll be at that one.
Thank you.
Would that be the best time to ask my parking question?
Probably.
Where are we with Mr. Collison's suggestion that after the policy is written in its kind of final form, that there is a 90-day period? Where are we with that?
That would be with the steering committee and the conversations at that board.
Elizabeth, where are we with that?
Same, same, same. So the full draft has been posted since May 1, since the beginning of May. And so we won't, we will be making changes to that as we go, but I would encourage LAN to read that draft. We will make the next round of changes and track changes, so everybody can see them. And I can say fairly confidently that we are circling a handful of issues, and if the LAN representatives make it through the version that's on there right now, I anticipate that we will only be working in 10% to 20% of the draft with these issues that we're coming up with. They're falling into the categories of the alternate, of the renewable energy, parking, and density. And those are conversations that we've been having with LAN members also. And we will be opening up a second round of meetings for the various groups within LAN. So I would say, don't wait. 90 days is a very long time to keep a code open prior to adoption. That's an unusual amount of time, particularly when the draft is posted now. So we'll look to steering committee to make a recommendation on that. And I think our steering committee chairman, Commissioner Finkel, I may have reached out to LAN to discuss that issue also. However, I'm adding it to the list.
If there are no other comments, I'd like to move on to the next item on the agenda. I, you know, want to, so the last item today is to thank Commissioner Carter very sincerely for his service to the community. And I feel like I'm a freshman, and you're like a PhD that became a professor. And so it doesn't even feel appropriate for me to, you know, say what I'm saying, but I really genuinely appreciate your knowledge. I think the commission is going to lose your experience, and hopefully we can continue to get counsel from you, and you'll continue to advise me, I hope. But thank you very much. Thank you very much. And there is a, we're going to meet later on tonight, and please, all the commissioners that can come, please come, and this is from the commission to you.
Well, thank you so much.
May I be allowed to say just a couple of things? I just want to say, this is like on my bucket list. So I studied city planning back in the 90s. I didn't end up choosing that as a career, but several people know here how that was always a dream of mine. My respect for the staff here is, is unbounded. My gratitude for the guidance that staff has offered in structuring the business of the public, bringing it to us in a way that we can discuss it and consume it, and hopefully pass it on to our elected officials in a way that makes their jobs easier, is, I think, incredibly important. So I really appreciate staff's expertise. The other commissioners, I have, I have, well, enjoyed is not always an accurate term, because some of our meetings have gone exceptionally late, but I have really appreciated and valued the time that we've spent together. the time that we've spent together. This Commission and all the sort of different, different iterations of Commissions that have preceded this. I, I'm really conscious of the role of government in the lives of the public, and I think this is a forum that really proves that local government works best when the public's engaged, when volunteers are engaged, and when staff brings the necessary expertise to really chew on issues that matter to, to, to people. And so I'm just, I'll, you know, see what the next volunteer opportunity is, but really wish whoever my successor is lots of, lots of success, and really hope whoever that person is will stay engaged with this process, because just like anything else in life, I think it, it works best when you really throw yourself into it and take it seriously. So I really appreciate this. I will, I will very proudly display it, and I'm grateful to you all. Thanks so much.
And if I may take a moment here, on behalf of staff, we'd like to thank you for your service and dedication and all you've done over the years with us, because we know it's been a lot of hours and a lot of energy and a lot of effort, and we've noticed it, we appreciate it. And so on behalf of staff, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, gosh.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Could I make my last motion? I move we adjourn.
Nice second.
The meeting is over. Thank you.
Point of order, we do need a vote on this.
Oh, I need a vote. Sorry, sorry. All in favor?
All in favor.
All in favor.
I'm on like 10% of my battery.